We're all waiting for you.
I know.
She's apparently been out riding her motorcycle. It's been out on the hog.
Okay, we are here today for a study session of the mayor and council. Um, can we please all stand and pledge for allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Councilpersons Baer?
Here.
Dupree?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsedo?
Here.
Soar?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins?
Here.
Okay, we are here for a study session to talk about marijuana ordinances and where we stand at this point. So, bring it over to the city manager.
Alright, so this was a study session that was requested and was approved at the last council meeting to hold. As I understand it, the discussion is going to be centered around the possibility of potentially opening up and increasing the number of licenses, increasing the number of locations that they can be located in. So, basically, we would have two actions that would eventually need to happen if this is the direction that council wishes to go. We would need to amend the regulation ordinance, I believe it's chapter 853.
Yes.
And we would have to also make a couple adjustments within zoning. Of those, the most difficult that would occur would actually be within the zoning, only because zoning amendments require public hearings and will typically should be going through the planning commission, so we would need to consult with them as well. Another barrier is the potential that it could be seen, could be, going against the public initiative, which specifically did state that it's limited to so many licenses. But again, this is totally policy-driven and I'm, you know, just here to answer any questions you might have that I can.
At the time that was passed, I asked on the floor of our attorney, did that limit us at the time or does that mean the minimum, the maximum we could do at the time? And it was left to the mayor and council to in future, open up wider if we wanted to. Now, we've had our experiment for a couple years. We've seen two businesses go over to Papless. They have thrived. We have seen the businesses throughout the state thriving and the cities are bringing in more money for what they're doing. And we could also bring more businesses into not only our downtown area, but if we want to do other areas as well. So I thought it was logical that we talk about this and decide, do we want to go farther on? Do we want to hold it where it's at? And I think it was appropriate, do we all sit down and now we've been here for a couple years, let's talk about it and see where we're at.
Through the chair?
Sure.
I would like to start with the fact of the ballot initiative specifically states the city shall issue no more than, and it lists the licenses that we're to issue. So I want to know, before we go any further, the legality of going against what the ballot initiative states.
As I said, I spoke to that on the floor two years ago, but we can, we'll keep that in mind as we're going forward.
To the chair. I did help work on that ballot initiative in 2019. That's where I met then resident Reverend Tracy Dupree at my very first city hall meeting I went to. And that ballot initiative was the best we could do at the time for getting marijuana-related businesses into Lincoln Park. And we've seen where the market is, we've seen where the free market system is taking us, and we're, I don't see how that initiative would limit us rezoning. The reason we needed that initiative was because it was not currently zoned for any marijuana-related businesses because councilor and mayor at that time would not take those steps, which is why me and Tracy worked on the ballot initiative that we did.
Through the chair.
Yes.
The intentions are not stated. What is stated is the fact that no more than is in here. That's what's stated in this ballot initiative.
And it also says where, correct?
Yes, it does.
So, how does that preclude us from opening up to other areas?
Because the voters voted where to put them.
Through the chair, your honor?
Yes.
If I may chime in, I know you probably have more to say, Councilman Baer. If Chief Waters would want to come up, I think there's been like seven calls to the two locations that we had. If he could expand on the severity of those issues, I mean, was it like gunfire? Was it, you know, someone stealing something?
Was that fair to do a study on those two? Because one of them's only been open like a month. And we've had a couple calls on the one and the other one, we've had, I think it was six or seven. There was some disorderly calls at the one, nothing major, but my fear is that we don't have enough stats yet because we haven't been open that long. And if you look at some of the other cities and the other areas of the state, there are some issues. I have some data here if you'd like to hear it.
Yes.
There was just a article just from a couple months, a month ago, that was talking about the robberies that were going on and that there was 117 break-ins between April and November of these businesses. You know, these are targets, these buildings are targets, and if they're not secured, then there's issues. And I don't feel like we have enough stats yet because they just haven't been open long enough, if that makes any sense. One's only been open a month.
Thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
So, no like gunfire, no one got murdered?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Thank you, chief. And if I have a follow-up?
You don't.
But thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So, I understand where Councilwoman Ross is going. It was a voter initiative. I also understand the fact that it's brought in revenue to the city. Marijuana business is a billion-dollar industry, we all know that. Monroe's got seven shops that I'm aware of near I-75 corridor and south of downtown. So what I'm going to say is, and then our discussion carry on, is our downtown area is in need of a thriving business. So, I'm going to throw it out there, even though the initiative was to have it in industrial area, I don't see why we couldn't perhaps either put it for vote for a downtown area or just have initiative. I don't know, that's what I'm going to say right now. I'm looking for more council interactions.
Okay, since council president brought this up, I know the city manager has looked at other cities and how many smaller cities than us have had quite a bit more business and brought in. Can you give me a little elaboration on that?
Well, so every community across the state that allows these receives the same amount of funding on a per retail establishment basis. This year, I think the total for a single was in the 51,000 range. Our total was just over 103,000 because of the two. But yeah, you do see across the state, a lot of communities smaller than us specifically, they have gone into the business of allowing this.
Through the chair. So 103,000, when you say two, the one that just opened recently wouldn't have contributed to that, 103,000, correct?
So, it still counted for our record. I'm not sure exactly how, but because we only allow the two, have the two licenses.
Okay, so it's per licensed half-court business.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with how well, in a grand scheme, it has to do with how well the businesses do and the tax revenue statewide that's collected. It's a state revenue sharing setup.
Okay. So, the initiative that Councilwoman Ross is talking about, at the time, that was rezoned to be in one specific area. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to be there permanently forever and that we can't change our options on this. This is something that we can look at and we can decide on. I have a concern about the two businesses that are there now that were forced to only be there and opening it up in other areas and how that's going to affect their businesses. Chief Waters didn't mention that there was any kind of catastrophe happening at these businesses as far as, you know, people getting hurt or that kind of thing. But if we do this, we have to look at the businesses that started here and how the outcome is going to be for them if we open it up to other areas. That's one of my concerns. The other concern is council president Salsedo is absolutely correct when he says that bringing a business to downtown that's going to generate that kind of revenue and increase our income as a city is a good thing. Anything that we can get in the downtown area that's going to generate income or bring taxes in to support the city is something that we have needed for a long time and we need desperately. How to go about this is, you know, something we have to decide upon if we want to, if we don't want to. But I think that with consideration to the two businesses that we're only allowed to open there and with respect to those businesses and generating income for the city, especially to maybe help rejuvenate the downtown, is something that we need to look at closely. And I don't think the ballot initiative is enough to stop us in our tracks and say, we can't do this. I think it's something that we really need to consider and put the time in and get more people to speak out on how they feel about it. But the downtown area needs to be rebuilt. We need to thrive down there, we need to do more for the citizens and, you know, more job opportunities, everything. So, I'm going to leave it at that, but I think that it's something that it's, it could be very beneficial to the city as long as we're getting all the correct information and it's not going to cause any more issues than the two that we already have caused.
Through the chair.
In a few minutes, I will, first we'll go through the council, then we will. Mr. Dupree, you had something to say?
Originally, I had brought this to the mayor. We had talked about it before because we're doing a city rezoning right now. The whole city is being rezoned, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So I thought it would be a great time to look at this because of the business opportunity downtown specifically. That is where my ideas were. I agree with Councilwoman Tobin and Councilwoman Salsedo. It's definitely something that we need to look at for the city, but we do need to consider our retailers that are here now. I agree with that.
Through the chair.
Sure.
This, I think this is going, this ballot initiative, I think, was a very nice compromise. You may have had people that were against marijuana businesses who voted for this because of the compromise, because of the limited licenses, because of where they're zoned in the general industrial district. To go against what the voters have approved, that's where we got our direction for the ordinance. And you're going against what the voters approved.
To the chair. I have to say, I completely disagree because every time anything marijuana-related has come up in Lincoln Park, whether it's the MMFLA, whether it was a statewide initiative, they have always generally passed by with a supermajority between 60 and 65 percent. This wasn't a compromise, this was the best that we could get for the situation that we were in. And I just want to apply basic fair market rules to this.
Okay, also along the lines, there are other licenses that have been available from the state now that weren't in the past, that is also something we could look at. There are, you know, some of the businesses want to expand. We, you know, if councilman says that we want to be fair to the businesses that are already there, one of them has been very, very vocal about wanting to expand and, but what they want to expand to right now doesn't, our zoning doesn't recognize it at all. So that's also something we would have to discuss.
Through the chair. You have other licenses still available in this marijuana category. Why not, if that's what, you know, you want more marijuana business, go after, or solicit businesses for those licenses, get those licenses filled.
Through the chair. It's my understanding that those licenses that have not been filled, as far as the medical marijuana licenses and the grow it licenses, the businesses, businesses are not looking for those. They're overly populated in other areas and there's no more room or interest in opening those kind of businesses in the area. They're more looking for the retail than they are as grow or medical marijuana facilities. That's why those licenses haven't been filled and it doesn't look like they will be filled anytime soon because there is just no interest in the businesses to fill those.
Through the chair. Before I talk, Mr. Soar, do you want to speak in before I speak twice?
Go ahead.
Sure. So, once again, I respect Councilwoman Ross's opposition, perhaps. Had the initiative for the vote been citywide, in my opinion, it would overwhelmingly have been decided, council decided to keep it in industrial area to keep it that way, if I'm not mistaken.
No, the voters did.
No, the language of the ballot initiative did.
Yes, and the ballot passed by the voters.
What I'm trying to say is, in my opinion, I think if we would have said it citywide, it would have been approved. That's my opinion. So, having said that, we're here today to decide how we're going to move forward with the business, right? So, whether it's going to happen tonight or in two weeks from now or next year, my point is trying to emphasize that I haven't seen no development downtown lately. In fact, I think more businesses have closed, if I'm not mistaken, the last six months than opened, right? We have the Lincoln Park Brewery that's been sitting vacant for five years, one of the most beautiful buildings in Lincoln Park. So, I don't know if we want to decide to open it up to the city, do we want to bring it up to the voters initiative to have it citywide, or we want to encourage more business to go to the industrial area? So that's my question to us, what do we want to do? Some businesses haven't made the cut, apparently, so I'm trying to emphasize that I want some kind of agreement, what are we going to do? So, I'm going to leave it with that. Once again, because I'm going to go with the flow of my colleagues here, I believe in downtown River Rouge, there's marijuana business right downtown.
Yep.
And the roads are looking really good now downtown. Business is thriving in River Rouge. So, that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to decide what you guys want to decide, but I want to make sure this is a great debate. My original deal was marijuana, there's nothing for me, I don't indulge in it, but if business wants to come to Lincoln Park and bring revenue to the city, that's what I'm for. So that's what, I'm going to leave it at that.
So, through the chair.
So, once again, discussion for council is, I'm open to.
Okay, since our city attorney is here.
Yes, sir.
The marijuana ballot proposal gave us, do we have the right to expand?
Well, that's not an easily answered question, mayor and council, and I think we've got to refer the points you raised today to Mr. Canvas, who worked with the city administration in developing the ordinance at that time. At that time, the intent was just to prevent it in one area pursuant to state statute. The same question has just been raised in Riverview and also in the city of Taylor, and no one knows a blanket answer. In fact, I got an inquiry from one of the former pastors here in Lincoln Park who now is angry because Taylor's attempting to go beyond the voter-approved initiative. So, it's not a patent absolute answer. If you give us some moments to look into it, come back with a response. Nothing should be acted on so radically, we'll be glad to research it, but there is no simple answer to that question. You should understand, though, that the ordinance that you adopted here is far different than the other communities, which is why I withstood the scrutiny in the courts, to the Court of Appeals. The city prevailed because the city put a lot of work into that ordinance. And at that time, those of you who are on council will recall that there was no movement on council to do anything with it. And other communities haven't done anything either. But for the ballot initiative, you would not be having this discussion here today or you'd be having a broader discussion today. So I'd like a brief moment, and I apologize for being late, mayor. Marijuana is not my thing either, so.
Okay.
I mean, the fact I'm in a band, it doesn't matter.
Well, I want you to get your band together.
I do that.
I would like a legal opinion on this before we do any further, of course, but that doesn't mean we can't discuss it.
Not at all.
And that's what we're doing tonight.
No, in fact, they encourage debate and at some point, the state may take control and it might be out of your hands completely. We advised you of that, you were on council at the time, mayor, that if there were no initiative but for any other action, the state could actually take something with the progressive administration and broaden it to allow it everywhere. So I'm not sure where this is going to end up. It's kind of like a long burning butt, you know, it goes out, you relight it. So we'll take a look at it and see what we can do.
In the meantime, for Councilman Ross, my opinion is, you're saying, we will move forward, discuss so that we have an opinion on what everybody thinks, and then, once we have a legal opinion on what we can do, then we would bring it back for a vote in the future, once we've, but right now, we're just asking people's opinion.
So, with that, your honor, if I could?
Yes.
Does anybody here live, what is that, within the first block of Fort Street?
On Fort Park?
Yeah, well, not Fort Park, but does your house border or is adjacent to a business?
Behind a business.
Behind a business. Or next to, because it could be a side lot.
Not this house, but my previous house was.
So, I ask that you consider the residents who live, who would border Fort Street.
We will take that into consideration and we will also take into consideration that the residents who are living within the first block of anywhere of the streets in our downtown area have some of the worst roads and some of this money could be spent on those roads. Do fix the roads. So, it's a win, it's a lose? It's, you know, you have to look at all the, all I'm saying is, we need to look at everything. That's all I'm saying. You know, we need more money to work on roads, this could be one of our ways of doing this.
Through the chair. As a neighbor, I would think that I would prefer businesses with people in them than vacant businesses next to my house. I mean, I would rather them be in business.
Through the chair.
Absolutely.
What my, my approach on this, though, is that the downtown district has the parking in the rear. And what I saw happen in Ecorson Rouge was that they brought parking to the side, to the front and to the rear, but mostly to the side and to the front, which not only enhanced the looks of all the buildings, it enhanced the downtown areas, but people don't, I personally, in my own opinion, this is strictly my own opinion, is that to have the parking in the rear of the building, I think would create added, and the chief may want to weigh in on that, but, you know, to have people doing behind the building, it's not comfortable, you know? I don't know, unless we can enhance the lighting, you know, enhance everything back there, but, and they do do a great job on the security for the businesses, but how do we protect everything else?
Is that a fair statement?
Including their patrons, yeah.
Through the chair. I do believe that they have very good camera systems on Papless Drive so they can see what's going on all around them. There's no parking, there's no behind the ones on Papless Drive. There is parking back there, but that's employee parking, but they make sure that they're safe also, not just the people coming up on the front or the side. They're pretty diligent in watching their surroundings. And I would think that if we brought something like that downtown, it would make the business owners even more diligent just because of the traffic that they would be seeing. And they are municipal lots back there, so it's not like they're going to be open until midnight, 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. They're going to close in a reasonable hour. So I think that with proper lighting and if we were to do that and generate some income to fix the roads in the parking lot and the businesses who are, you know, willing to do the cameras and that security, that would be great. I've only been in two in my entire life and I know that you can't go in without showing a driver's license and you can't get in unless you're buzzed in. And that was something I've never experienced before, but I think it's very good to be that safe, to work that much on safety, especially for the employees and the guests that are visiting the businesses. So I think that's something that could be worked out without too much of an issue.
And I would have to add that in the downtown area, we have several adult-themed entertainments, alcohol, and they all use the back parking lot and they all, all would, I would say, have the same issues that you would bring up. And I agree that, you know, maybe we need more lighting, maybe we need more, and this would be a way to pay for some of that as well. So, okay. As I said, there are at least one of the businesses that is wanting to expand and do into some other licenses, which right now, we don't zone or allow in our city. Is that something that the city, the council would like to look into or is that something the city, the council does not want to look into? And I'll just ask you at that rate.
Through the chair. I think you need to elaborate on what kind of, what they're looking to do. I know that they would like to expand into what they could refer to as a consumption lounge, which would be basically a bar without alcohol, but with the products that they sell. Like I say, I don't know much about it, but I guess that's the new upcoming thing all over the place. So if they were, if we were to allow that, I know that at least one business that's here is very interested in doing that and expanding that way. I don't know much about them, honestly.
I've had that interest pour up to me and I've had another one about the pop-up business. And again, I'm just, I'm asking what the council feels on either one of those. So does anybody have a yes or a no or a thought on that?
I feel we should look into it, it would be worthwhile, I think.
To the chair. I personally would like to do some more reviewing and study of my own. I'm not up to speed as everybody here else on the council.
Both of these are fairly new licenses, so we really don't have a whole lot of.
Right.
To be honest with you.
You have two years on me, though.
Well, no, but on the two new licenses that we're asking about now, the state has really just started getting into them. So that's something that, you know, we have to consider. And in a business like this, you've got to kind of consider it now before everybody else considers it and the business is gone someplace else instead of here. So that's all I'm suggesting.
Through the chair.
Yes.
My final statement, then, I know some people from the audience want to speak at us, but is there still room downtown? If I'm not recalling, wasn't there room for like five facilities, maybe six? And we only have two. Why isn't the other four that got approved or, do we still keep them in that area? I mean, is that what we're trying to do here?
That's something we will also have to look at if we want to do these two kind of licenses, that's what we're talking about right now. We could say, yeah, we could do that, but it's got to stay in that area. We could say, or we could open it up to others. You know, we're redoing our zoning laws right now, so now's the time to look at it.
So you're saying that we would have to put out for bid again in another lottery to build more businesses in, or there?
I would assume if we're going to offer something like that, I would have, I don't know if it would be legal to offer the established businesses first or not. or not, but it seems to me that we should thank them for being here and offer them a something. I don't know if that's legal. We'd have to look into it.
We'll have to discuss that with Jason Canvasser.
Yeah, yeah, we would have to.
I think, that's all I have. I know someone wanted to speak.
Okay, did anybody else want to?
I have one question, Mayor.
Sure.
I understand council has a very narrow question. It's can the city expand beyond the parameters of the voter-approved ballot initiative? And that's what you have just at this point. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it would be either by another initiative or by council initiative for zoning change, which council all understands that this is not an overnight deal, and it goes before the plan commission and the council for approval of an amendment to the zoning code. So it's not an overnight process here.
No, that's, that's why we're doing it now, so we just get it out and talk about it, and that's why you call it a study session.
All right, very good. Thank you.
So Jason, how would you feel about the? Yeah? Okay.
Quite honestly, I wish we would just wait till we had our legal opinion. Things are coming out that, I mean, I've heard comments that, uh, those businesses will close early. Well, they don't close early now. They close at 10:00. That's not early. Has the state, with these new licenses, is, is the state, um, do they have all their ducks in order with, in regards to those licenses?
I would assume they do, because they're opening up all over the state. And I, and, and like our attorney said, we're not talking about doing this tomorrow. We're talking about finding out where everybody's standing and then moving forward from there, you know, investigating. This is a slow, slow walk. Maureen, what do you feel about the?
When I said they closed early, I didn't, I mean, 10 o'clock, you've got party stores that are open until midnight and 2:00 a.m. I meant they would, that's what I meant, by close early. They wouldn't be open like that. I would be very interested in learning more and learning the galies, and I would learn about the licensing and what the, um, what you have to do in order for us to offer those licenses and also the zoning. Maybe Bob Myers can help with that, tell us what he feels, and, you know, I definitely would like to look into it further.
Okay. Now, I have some guests here who would like to speak?
Yeah, I just, you brought up a good comment about revenue for the city, but I wouldn't compare it to cities like Monroe or any border town, because remember when I was a kid and drinking age was 21, we all went to Toledo to drink because it was 18, and the bars are full of Michigan people, Michigan kids drinking. And I bet you, not a dollar to a donut anymore, because a donut is a dollar, five bucks to a donut, that half the, the first sign you see coming across up from Ohio, last time I was in Ohio, was marijuana signs, two or three of them for Monroe. I bet you 50% of their business of all the borders, any border town to Ohio or Indiana comes from outstate into Michigan. So you're not, they're not going to come up to Lincoln Park, they're going to go where it's close. That's going to be in Monroe. So if you, don't compare it, because you're going to compare an apple to an orange when you talk about, you know, what you're going to get, what Monroe's getting, because they're a much larger, you know, group to draw from. And I wanted to see, I don't live in Lincoln Park, but I belong to a club here in Lincoln Park, I'm on the board, but Reefer Rouge is what they call River Rouge now. If you go there, in about two, three blocks, you get four or five marijuana stores. Like, I didn't, I lived in Rouge, we had a business in Rouge, and the drive-by where my dad's business used to be, and to see a bunch of marijuana shops all together, it just, it just seemed weird. I don't know. That's my opinion.
To the Chair. I don't, if I can rebuttal, I appreciate your opinion, but also, there's people that live in Michigan that go to Canada for opportunities also, so.
Well, sure, true, but, oh, yeah.
Your scenario is counterproductive.
Well, no, it's not, no, it's not. Because if you think you can do the business that Monroe does, you're draining, because, you know, it's not legal in Ohio.
True.
You know, it's legal all over Michigan. You know, I go to, I go to Canada, buy booze and bring back. Every time I go to Canada, buy booze, and I pay bigger duty.
I'm talking about, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, but, but that's, it's, you're.
The problem is five different cities, so, you know, I appreciate.
But if you live in Toledo, you're going to come to Lincoln Park to buy marijuana? You're going to go to Monroe?
I know people that live in Toledo that come to Detroit to gamble and come to.
Well, casinos are a different story. Well, there's no casino, there's no casino in Monroe.
Okay, well.
In Toledo, we don't, we don't need to.
But I appreciate your.
No, but I, think about it.
Border towns are border towns.
But you're not going to, you're not going to do what Monroe does, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
No, we are clearly not Monroe. No doubt about it.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know all of you, I just know the mayor for a long time, and I know your city clerk. I'm Nick Salas, I'm an attorney. And I will preface my remarks by saying that I have represented marijuana businesses, including one of them that's in Lincoln Park, okay? But I'm not talking as an attorney, I'm talking as a Lincoln Parker, because I was born in Lincoln Park, I graduated Lincoln Park High School, and I've talked to a lot of my fellow friends in Lincoln Park. I'm in Lincoln Park a lot, whether I go to the restaurants or whether I go to a friend's home, okay? So I'm going to question your basic premise, that this is a booming business that the city ought to get into. It's not. It's booming, but it's highly, highly competitive. There was an article in the paper, and there's court ongoing right now for Sky Mint, which is the largest marijuana operator in the state of Michigan. They are in receivership. They were burning through $3 million dollars a month. They owe over $200 million. They are in debt. They are a failed business. So before you hitch your ride to additional businesses that you're going to bring into the city, make sure they, they're going to be strong enough to survive, because this isn't a money-making operation for the city, and it would be short-sighted to allow more licenses for the $50,000 you're going to get, because you're going to bring traffic into the city that the citizens really don't want on their main drag. They wanted it on Papless Drive because it's an industrial spot, it's away from schools, it's away from churches, it's away from people's houses. And you've got some of the revenue-based money coming in from those two operations. Why isn't nobody growing on Papless Drive? Because it's not profitable to do so. That's why they don't want to grow, and the license is up for grabs, right? Now, let me go back in your history that the mayor will remember, Kerry might remember. Mayor Saul, in the 90s, worked hard to, what, create a thriving business. The city supported Polino, and we got jobs and development, and they built that whole structure there. And it was a beautiful thing. Go back a few years later. You rush to do something and develop a condominium or apartment complex on the north side of Southfield, past the Walgreens, and you deeded the property to a developer who basically flopped. He built one well along Electric, he never fully developed the parking, I mean, the other residential that he had promised. He still owns the property, there's no longer any parking back there for the businesses along Fort Street, and it's a weed-infested area. One or two or three marijuana businesses on Fort Street or Dix or Southfield is not going to be the development tool that you guys, that this city needs and that you should be supporting. You're doing a good job. I know for a fact that the city has come out and has tried to help Park Restaurant with some material funding for improvements and other businesses. Support and fund the businesses that are here. Solicit other businesses that will hire people and have a base in the city that will survive long-term. Don't be like the blockbusters and video stores of the 80s, where there was one or two or three, and they were profitable, then there were 12, and none of them survived, right? Also, your empty party stores. What's going on? Suburbans gone, Clayton Bell gone, empty buildings. Nobody's buying booze from them anymore, they're buying them from the big-box stores. So you have empty stores. Don't get suckered by some out-of-town developer that thinks he's going to make money on the citizenry of Lincoln Park, and he, you think that he's going to, other than the store that is there and the employees that he has there, there's no spin-off. It's like Little Caesar's Arena. People go down there, they go catch a game, they get in the car, they leave. There isn't going to be any spin-off from a marijuana business. Ask the two existing businesses whether there's any spin-off. That's all I have to say for you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Chris Ailo. I'm an attorney on Mound Road in Warren, Michigan. This is probably one of the quickest turnarounds that I've seen in any city, and I represent marijuana stores and businesses from Traverse City all the way down to Lunapere. So, um, I think one of your stores just opened up in December, and now we're talking about adding more stores. So what's happening in the industry from Traverse City or from Marquette or even everywhere all the way south is competition and overproduction. So if you've read the newspapers, Sky Mint's in receivership, along with six other fairly prominent names that branded themselves early and secured themselves onto the pocketbooks of some private LLC investment. So, um, it's a commodity. Weed is just like corn or soybean, so it started off at $3,500 a pound, and now it's down to $600 a pound. And so you really have to know how to grow, and you really have to have PhD people anymore. You no longer need the Michigan guy in the garage. You thought he could grow marijuana, and he was the best marijuana grower, and you wanted him as your marijuana grower in a competitive commercial business. So that, that formula has now failed, and we're seeing it all throughout Michigan, up for sale, growhouses, up for, closing rooms inside of their facilities just because of overproduction and not enough market space. Um, so to turn this around, just because the state's awarding $52,000 per facility at this time, and Monroe is a classic example of, of, of too many stores, along with Ann Arbor. So Monroe has 13, but that gentleman right there is exactly why everybody ran to Monroe, is because they were first hopped in, and Ohio, I-O is right down there, and it's only medical, and it's not flower, it's only oil. Therefore, everybody from Ohio's been coming up this way to secure their product. Lunapere jumped in, they have one store, they're in a lawsuit right now, um, and they have one store. However, Ohio's not far behind. I just attended a conference. I'd say they're about eight months to a year at the most from enacting a statewide adult-use, um, prop on the ballot, or the legislature may do it, we'll see. But they're not far behind. Once that happens, you'll see a lot of shuttered doors in Monroe. There's only probably three stores in Monroe that are really doing well. Large parking, lots of parking, and, um, right off the freeway. So two or three of them right off of La Pleasance are doing well. The rest of them are, just like everybody else in a competitive market. Take that formula and apply it to Lincoln Park, where you've told the first two groups to come in and stay hidden in an industrial street on John Papless, and then arguably be our guinea pig, and then two months later, we're going to open it up and bring it downtown, possibly. Um, I don't think that would sit too well with them. That's, uh, not too good corporate responsibility or government responsibility to deal with how to treat each other. Uh, they're stuck where they are. So if you are going to do it, it's only fair that it stays on John Papless Drive to them and to the rest of your citizens. Was this a bat, was this a, um, um, a council initiative, or was this a citizen initiative that passed? Mr. Bear, what?
Citizen.
It was a citizen. So arguably, under Matma, uh, you did a competitive process, and so, um, be lots of questions. I don't know if your charter allows, um, a city initiative to be tampered with by council within a period of time. I don't know your, your city attorney's smart, he'll, he'll be able to tell you all that stuff. But, um, if the citizens voted this in, I guess it should be up to the citizens whether, um, they want additional stores in their city. And then the top it on top of everything else that if you're going to do it legislatively, where are you going to put it? How many buffers? Schools, daycares, kindergarten, um, drug addiction places? Are you keeping it away from houses? The zoning schematic, all of that analysis. Uh, then move it on to where are you going to do it? Downtown where? Uh, do you have enough parking to, if you're going to do it in downtown, Fort Street's kind of, so this area's kind of congested, and do you have enough parking? Do you have turning radiuses? Does that allow it? I mean, the studies are immense when you start bringing this business into, um, a congested area. They're just immense. Takes lots of, lots of studies on your behalf to figure out if it's a good suit for that zoning area. Uh, but I'm learning that.
If I, if I may, the reason this was brought up is because we're getting ready to redo all of our zoning. So now is the time to look at everything. Not just this particular issue, but we're looking at a lot of different.
You're doing your future map.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, don't, I think you were mentioning consumption lounges. If you guys are not familiar with those, there's only two in Michigan. One in Hazel Park called the Hot, uh, Social or Hot Spot, and then there's one in Calcasas. The one in Hazel Park's been open for about a year, but it's not open. It doesn't even have events, because it's a poorly antiquated business relationship. There's, there, it's really difficult to make money. So they only open for events and, um, employee meetings. Outside of that, the building's empty. It's real nice, it's just a bar, but it's not open. Um, maybe someone will come along in Michigan and have a better idea than a few stores out in California have, but it's a poor business model. I don't know if someone would do it because of, you can, you got to buy, in, in, you either charge people to come in or you don't, and you charge a membership or you don't, and where do they bring their product in there? How do they get it in there? Can you deliver it to them inside of a, um, like a shoebox sort of thing? Um, there's a lot of questions that are going on. So there are two in Michigan, and, um, Calcasas is the only one that has business hours between, um, seven days a week. Again, Hazel Park is not open. Um, and so then that question, too, is where do you put that? How far do you keep it away from homes, neighborhoods, kids, schools, daycares? Your complete analysis on that. Um, so I don't have good discussions. I, I know the money's, it's there, but, uh, competition has now, so Michigan roared. Michigan roared out of the seat. We have a lot of competitive people in this, in this state. So once the Matma, the recreational law passed, everybody jumped in. Everybody and their grandmother was growing marijuana in their basement, and they were selling it as a caregiver, and then eventually got into the stores. And then the state of Michigan caught up to them and said, you can't sell anymore to stores, and they stopped that. And so, uh, and then as, as fast as it skyrocketed, it, it jumped, it dived, it just nosedived quicker than it did. So, um, I'm, I may talk a lot, sorry. So I'll get, I'll, I'll move on. But it has dived, we are in a recession, the industry is in its own recession right now, and, uh, if you open it up to more than two stores in this populace, uh, there'll be casualties within a few years. It's just that we're just, they're not ready yet. The regulations put on the industry to move in are extremely, um, heavy. And so to say that you can only be on John Papless and then say, well, two months later, hey, all your competitors, come on out and come on to Main Street and downtown, and we love you, um, it wouldn't be fair to those corporate citizens that are trying to get along and trying to do everything right within your city.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to approach the council? Anybody on the council have any further thing to say?
To the Chair, I just want to say thank you for all your input, and, um, it's well taken, just so you know.
Point of order, I guess. The one dispensary has been open for over a year, not just two months, as a matter of clarification.
Okay, with that, we'll close this meeting, and we'll take a 10-minute break for our regular council meeting.
Yeah. [laughing]. Thank you. Uh.